Call to order at 6:23 PM. And good evening and welcome everyone. At this time, the Board is a trustee will now reconvene in an open session. Roll call, Mr. Fedor.
Here.
Mrs. Kessler.
Here.
Mrs. Dorte.
Present.
And Mr. Medina.
Here.
And I'm here myself. And let's do the flag salute. Mr. Fedor, could you lead us for the flag salute?
I would love to.
Please stand.
Let's all stand. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, in thy God, in thy kingdom, in thy great peace.
Thank you very much. Please seated.
Love hearing the kids.
A report from the closed session. Please quiet. One in the closed sessions board didn't take any actions on any of the item. We will be continues in our closed session after our regular meeting to be discussed on further. We're going to start with the school reports. Student representative from Salma High School, Alicia Salazar. Could you give us a report?
Okay. Good evening. The week before spring break, we had a few block schedules as juniors started CASP testing on campus. Our bear bookstore was open on Thursday, allowing students the chance to turn in their bear books that they earned for showing the Salma High Core Four family values in exchange for various items. We also had a school-wide egg hunt on Friday, which saw a lot of student participation. Coming back from spring break, our juniors will continue to test. We're also gearing up for our big events, including the powder puff game and community rally and prom. At the powder puff flag football night, our freshman girls will take on the sophomore girls and the juniors will take on the seniors. We will also have performances by the Black Bear Brigade, Los Pasanios, and the junior class powder puff cheer team. Games and prizes. There will also be food trucks selling items at the event. We hope to see you there. Our junior class is excited as a planned Prom 2025 enchantment on the Nile. Prom tickets are going on pre-sale this Wednesday through Friday, with ticket sales continuing next week. And now for the athletic report. Bear Nation Sports. Baseball is 12-6 and has won 10 games in a row. They are now 4-0 in TCC play. Softball is 10-8 and they have one tie. Both baseball and softball play Kingsburg this week. Tennis is getting prepared for the Tri-County Conference Tournament. Boys volleyball competes this Friday at Fresno High. Women diver excited to jump back into Salma High School's newly remodeled pool in a few weeks. Track competes at CVC this weekend. Visalia in the Tri-County Conference. Thank you again for our support of Bear Nation Athletics as we enter the last two weeks of Tri-County Conference League play.
Thank you very much. Do we have from ALMS, Delani Perez or Casey Very? She's coming up.
Good evening. My name is Delani Perez, and this is the ALMS school report. State testing. This week, we start KAA SPP's testing in eighth grade English classes. Students will be testing during the period when they have English. Next week, seventh and eighth grade English testing will take place. We will not be on modified vow schedule during testing this year. Door decorating. During advisory, students will be tasked with adapting on travel destination for a door decorating contest. These doors are to include not only graphics, but also important information that they will gather through research. Stress Awareness Month. April is Stress Awareness Month. Students will be able to create their own stress ball at lunch next week with our mental health team, ASB officers. Next week, we will hold Associated Student Body Officer elections on Thursday through Friday. Positions will be voted on include president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. Athletics. We are in the middle of spring season with baseball, softball, track, and boys tennis. Track updates. Israel Zambrano finished first in the triple jump and third in the long jump. Eli Flores finished second in the 100 meter and 200 meter and is currently ranked sixth in the state. Joao Soto finished second in the shot put. The team will be competing at the Fresno Country Championships this weekend at Ridley High to qualify for the Valley Youth Championship. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The public input. Members of the public wishing to the address the Board of Education on a matter within the jurisdiction of the board, one not on agenda may do so during the public comments period for up to three minutes. Public comment on a specific agenda items are heard under that items from the public record. Please state your name. Do we have a public comments tonight?
We do. First one is Christina Ferro Rosch.
Christina, could you come forward? Can we move into the second and maybe we can come back there?
Good evening, board members, Mr. Gomes and community. I am Noemi Garza, and I am a teacher, reading intervention teacher at Eric White. And I wanted to introduce Christina Rosa. And she has a letter of petition that she submitted to Mr. Gomes and the board. I'm here in support of that letter along with Rosa Flores, who is also a teacher at Eric White Kindergarten. And here is Christina to read the petition that we have submitted to the board and Mr.
Good evening, everyone. This is a little different than the petition that was submitted, but I'll go ahead and read this. So I'm here today representing Eric White Elementary School. Ryan Emerson is an integral part of our school family. He gives 150% every day to staff, students, and parents. While we know he'll be successful wherever he goes, his absence will leave a real void. He's deeply woven into the daily lives of our students and community. We've been fortunate at Eric White to have consistent leadership in the recent years. And because of that, our academic growth and school climate continue to thrive. Mr. Emerson and Mrs. Celcedo are known as our dream team. They give our all to our campus and it shows. I'm sorry, they give their all to our campus and it shows. Unfortunately, that label, level of stability, hasn't been seen across the district. Heartland, for example, has had six administrators in three years. Similar turnover has happened at Jackson, Wilson, and Indianola. In those schools, program managers have been the steady presence, supporting new leaders and providing much-needed consistency for students and families. So why are we disrupting what's clearly working at Eric White? We're told changes are to build capacity, but when demographics are similar across schools, shuffling all program managers doesn't add up. We've also heard Mr. Emerson is needed at ALMS because they want a male presence. Our boys at Eric White already have that in Mr. Emerson. For some, he's the only positive male figure in their lives. Through the Young Men's Alliance, a program he founded, our students learn life skills that stay with them beyond elementary school. This decision doesn't just move a staff member. It disrupts relationships, programs, and momentum that have taken years to build. We should be cultivating learning and duplicating success.
Name kinds are up. Can you wrap up?
Without disrupting it. We may not be able to change the decision today, but we hope you'll seriously consider keeping Mr. Emerson at Eric White and reconsider moving program managers district-wide. Our students deserve consistency. They deserve strong leadership, and Eric White students deserve Mr. Emerson. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and families. I am here tonight as a parent, as a partner in Indianola Parent Club, and as a voice to many others who care deeply about the future of Indianola. We understand that changes happen within the district. We are not here to argue that. No one else is capable. We're here to say clearly and firmly it is that there is no one like Ms. Baca. Last school year, when Indianola was without a principal, it was Ms. Baca who held the school together. She stepped up in a way few could or would. Without her leadership, her dedication, and her tireless commitment to our students and staff, I truly believe we would not be able to make it through as successfully as we did. She was the reason our school didn't just survive, it stayed strong. Since Ms. Baca has been with us, the morale of Indianola has transformed. You can feel it when walking through the halls, a sense of unity, a purpose of optimism. As parents, we see this in the way that the staff works together. We see the teamwork, the support, the communication. Ms. Baca is at the heart of that. She has made it clear from day one that parents matter. She listens, she communicates, she builds relationships, not just with staff and students, but with us, the families. The same families who entrusted you as board members to represent our voices. Now we ask that you do not just, sorry, now we ask that you just not do that, but listen to the voices of those who know the school best. Removing Ms. Baca from Indianola without even hearing from its parents first just doesn't seem right. It doesn't make sense. You don't fix what isn't broken, and right now, Indianola is thriving. That's in large part because of Ms. Baca. She's not just fulfilling a role, she's going above and beyond it. She's invested in the school, in the kids, and in the community in a way that we have never experienced before. The relationships she's built with our families aren't easily replaced. They were earned with time, with honesty, and with genuine care. So tonight, we ask you, can you hear us the way Ms. Baca does? Can you show us the same respect and understanding that she has shown us since day one? Ms. Baca is more than just a program manager, she is a warrior, and she deserves to stay right here where she is needed the most. Thank you from Indianola Parent Club.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Yes, I'm Gina Morales, and I'm the mother of Lennon Morales Castillo. And I'm here today because my son has been denied basic educational rights. And you guys made me beg and plead just to get him accommodated, just to get something going, and just to get him released from your guys' corruption. And Superintendent Ed, your inaction has allowed the district to abuse its power from the top down. You failed to protect my son's rights and have allowed delay to affect his education and his mental health. Amy Visser, standing over there in the back with the glasses and the white shirt, she was a special ed director who forced an inappropriate IEP on me, my son, and my family, disregarded my son's needs, pushing through a system that's broken. Beth Doyle and other staff at Roosevelt Elementary, Alisa Gentry and school psych Anna Alicia Rodriguez, they all failed to act on my son's educational needs, leaving him without necessary accommodations for months on end. And no one did anything to fix it or intervene. Andrea Garcia, a district employee harassed me in public, threatening my safety and dignity while I was holding my innocent sleeping baby. She came running after me aggressively. And this is your front office assistant at Roosevelt. Up until Luis Amora, who retaliated against me as well, along with the rest of the chain. And these are just clear signs of misuse of power. And I'm simply advocating for my son's rights, and you chose to escalate unnecessary conflicts and just stonewall me to the very breaking point. And this district has been a disaster for my son's education. You've all abused your power and neglected your duties. And I'm done letting you disregard my son's needs. And I'm done with you guys. You guys need to do something about all of the abuse and power, and good luck to all of you, and protect your children. Make sure you stand up for your rights. Thank you.
Do we have any other? All right. Thanks for the comments, and we're going to move into the discussion and action item. Superintendent Mr. Gomes, the first item is the student showcase.
Yes, so before we begin tonight, I do want to welcome home and congratulate the Salma High School percussion band. They were world champions. Absolutely. Are they here tonight? Yeah, can you guys come on up real quick, real, real fast, and we'll have the Jackson crew. We'll be recognizing the band for not only this win, but also for their storybook year at the board meeting on May 13th. Congratulations to our band. And I want to show you guys, they're back from Dayton, Ohio, and we are world champions. And just a little showcase for everybody. Amazing, amazing job. Let's give them a round of applause. All right. And then we'll be back with the band and a performance in May, so we can all see it and enjoy it. All right. This evening, we're excited to feature Jackson Elementary as our student showcase. They'll be presenting their mentorship program, which is a partnership with Heartland. And also, they're going to be on ABC 30 today. I think it was already broadcasted out there, which is really cool. I'd like to invite Principal Jeff Wimp to the front to introduce the program leaders
Good evening. I apologize, we were in the Bob Uker seats. That's dating me, isn't it? We are blessed tonight to have the opportunity to highlight some amazing students and some incredible staff who have recognized a need and have come up with creative ways to meet that need. And so they have created this incredible partnership between Jackson and Heartland. And I'd like to thank Principal Farley for his work as well in letting people do what is their passion. And that's what tonight is all about. So I'd like to introduce Estella Gonzalez, as she and Sonia Osadeno celebrate what's been going on in the Jackson-Hartland Mentorship Program. And I will say, at one point, she'll probably mention it, but they did a principal Q and A, and they grilled us. Like, I went home that night and I cried. I'm just kidding, I didn't cry. But they did a really, really good job, and it's a great opportunity for students to get great opportunity for students to get, not only an opportunity for our young Jackson Huskies to get to reach a little higher, but it's also a great opportunity for the Heartland Saints to find a way to impact the next generation. So I'd love those two ladies to explain a little bit more.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Gomes, my name is Estella Gonzalez.
Hello, I'm Sonia Acevedo.
And we will be talking a little bit about the Jackson-Heartland Mentorship Program tonight.
One second.
The idea for the mentorship program really stemmed from our strategic plan. We talked about, Sonia and I, and met with some of our directors back in June of last year, and we're looking to fill that gap, as Mr. Wimp said, of some students that are not necessarily needing Tier Three or ongoing counseling, but also could benefit from something like a mentorship program. And as you all know, being that in Selma, we're a rural community, it's hard to access some of those programs that might be available in Fresno or other bigger cities. So both Sonia and I facilitate and provide oversight to the students every week, and the idea behind it is that we have a Heartland mentor, such as Rihanna, and elementary students in fifth and sixth grade that are paired together, and we do different activities. We are focusing on positively impacting students' emotional well-being, increasing motivation to want to come to school and to participate, feel connected to school, their peers, and their future, and as well as leveraging student support from our homeschool liaisons and PBIS aides. So we were very thankful to have our homeschool liaisons, our homeschool liaison from Heartland that generously gave us her time and transported students every week from Heartland to Jackson. And then we have our wonderful Heartland PBIS aide who was also helping facilitate every week. So on the presentation, you do have some of the goals that we established for the group, which I could read them to you, however, I would rather have Ms. Rihanna, one of our mentors, come up and talk a little bit about them.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Gomes, and Selma Unified Staff. My name is Rihanna Vargas, I am an 11th grader that attends Heartland High. I have been a part of the Jackson-Heartland Peer-Pal Mentorship Program since the beginning of January of 2025. This is the pilot program and partnership between Heartland and Jackson Elementary. This mentorship program aims to pair an elementary student with a positive role model from Heartland Educational Center. In creating this partnership, the elementary student can learn how to ask for support from their mentors in areas like their academics, social lives, and when navigating their emotions and life challenges. All of the mentors can agree that during this process, we have learned things about ourselves, how to apply different skills, and how to become stronger role models for those around us. We have been able to apply communication skills, sorry, goal-setting skills, leadership, and mental health awareness. Our Heartland and Jackson administrators have been a key component in making this program successful. We even get to obtain credits for participating in this mentorship program. I would also like to thank Ms. Sonia and Ms. Estella for this opportunity I was given. Thank you.
Next, we have Rihanna's mentee, Manuel.
Hello, my name is Manuel, and Rihanna is my mentor. We meet weekly with our mentors, and each week, we have a different skill to focus on. And of course, we are able to play games, ask our mentors for advice, and just spend quality time together. We were able to go to Fresno State, write letters to our future selves, and even write letters to Selma senior citizens. Our program was even highlighted on ABC 30. Thank you, board members, Mr. Gomes, and Selma Unified for having us here today. Thank you.
Yeah, so as they were mentioning, we do have weekly lessons, and here's some pictures. There's that wonderful Q and A that we did with principals, asking them, you know, did they have mentors growing up? What are some skills that they can pick up, the mentors and the mentees? We had team-building activities, so that they can trust one another and lean on each other throughout the weeks. It's been really awesome to see the mentors get close and lean on each other, but also the mentees get close as well. We went to Fresno State, where we were able to learn about different programs, opportunities, both for the mentees and the mentors for their future in college and career.
Thank you very much.
And last finale, so we did have our, we were able to be featured on ABC 30, and it did air today, so look out for the link, and everyone did wonderful, so it was really cool to get that highlighted and being able to bring that positive attention to Selma Unified.
Thank you.
And then just to end, you know, looking forward, and we're always wanting to improve and do better, we would love to expand the program, maybe to another school site, and being able to grow more mentors and mentees. So thank you to the board, thank you, Mr. Gomes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please hang out before, we have one more student presentation. We brought a bunch of goodies for you guys, so if you don't mind hanging out just for a little bit.
Yeah, thank you, thank you again, and congratulations for the hard working you guys doing. Thank you. And next one, we are moving to the recognition of English learner students reclassification.
Thank you. In California, reclassification of English learners to fluent English proficiency is a process based on four key criteria: assessment of English language proficiency, teacher evaluation, parent input, and a comparison of the student's performance and basic skills of their English proficiency peers. So I invite our Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Karina Diaz, to introduce our reclassified students.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board President Sehoda, Board Members, Executive Cabinet, and Superintendent Gomes. My name is Karina Diaz, and it is my honor to recognize our English learner students who have been reclassified to English proficient this school year. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Karina Diaz, y es un gran honor para mí reconocer a nuestros estudiantes que son aprendices de inglés que han sido reclassificados este año escolar. These students have met the rigorous expectations of receiving a Level Four on the state assessment, ALPAC, in addition to meeting the other district criteria that was just mentioned. Estos estudiantes han recibido un nivel de cuatro en el examen estatal de ALPAC, además de cumplir con otros requisitos de nuestro distrito. District-wide, we had 172 students meet this criterion from last spring to this spring. En todo nuestro distrito tuvimos 172 estudiantes que se han reclasificado desde la primavera del año pasado hasta ahora. In addition to a certificate, this year, we're very proud to announce that our students will be receiving a beautiful medal. Yay, they're a CAO, is holding up. And no solo van a recibir los estudiantes su certificado que siempre reciben cada año escolar, sino también tenemos algo nuevo para ellos este año escolar que viene siendo una medalla de reclasificación porque esto es algo extraordinario que ellos han hecho y queremos que tengan algo extraordinario también. This is an amazing, amazing accomplishment, therefore, we have this awesome medal for them. All right, if you are being honored tonight and haven't checked in, please make sure you have done so already at the front table. Si va a ser reconocido esta noche y no se ha registrado, por favor, vayan a la mesa, si no, ahorita les vamos a llamar. All right, so with that, we will begin. I will call the students, and you guys, come on up. Vamos a empezar, voy a llamar a los nombres de los estudiantes para que vengan aquí a recibir su certificado y su medalla. Aaron Navarro Rodriguez. Marlin Vázquez Luna. Alexander Robledo Zarate. Hector Ortiz Vázquez. Brianna Lombera Vargas. Sarai Flores Castañeda. Tamira Calderón Barrios. Giovanni Lima Sosa. Orelia Jiménez Contreras. Alexander Brito Escobedo. Gabriela López García. Adriatne Ayuso Lorenzo. José Medina. Sina Memi. Juan Patiño Martínez. Derek Diaz Martinez. Janes Herrera Barbosa. Angel Jiménez Hernández. Armando Navarro Rodriguez. Ana Enriquez Monjarás. Victoria Escobar Loza. Yereraia Aburto Romero. Alexis Torres Gutiérrez. Angel Mariano Quintero. Kaylin Francisco López. Edgar Luna. Andy Santos. Christopher Pérez Rafael. Allison Harquín Vicente. Avery Valades Calderón. Thiago Pérez Arellano. Carlos Ixmatlawa Sánchez. Valerie Sánchez Tadeo. Emmanuel Vázquez Miguel. Fortino Coronado Pérez. Azucena Rios Bautista. Fata Vender. Brandon Savala Jiménez. Scarlett Leyva. Giovanni Barranco Hernández. Bridget Ruiz Calvo. Aileen Estrada. Irene Vázquez Calderón. Ivan Rosas Godinez. Isaac Villegas. Emily Santiago Martínez. Joshua Hernández José. Berenice Ceballos Rangel. Maico Avénando Luján. Joseline Menjivar Vera. Diego Alvarado Hernández. Lizbeth Luis Ruiz. Francisco García Alonso. Alejandra Reyes Ángulo. Emilio Salgado Cruz. Amy Chávez Hernández. Francisco Cordero Ruiz. Congratulations to all of our students, un gran aplauso a nuestros estudiantes.
Nice job. How many of them were there?
And the parents, they're going to take photos here in front of them all.
170 or something? 172.
Now we're going to pause for a second, and then have some cookies and take a picture, okay?
All right. Congratulations.
All right, we are back in session and we're gonna move into item number four under the discussion and action item. Special recognitions to the teacher author Alex Branson and the Org. Offered by the Michael Kimsey Eric White School Teacher.
Yeah, I don't know if he's here, is Michael here? No, well, we got books here in front of you. I'll read this out regardless. We're proud to give a special recognition to one of our very own teacher authors. I met with him, Michael Kimsey from Eric White. He's a third grade teacher and recently published a young adult fantasy adventure novel titled, Alex Branson and the Org of Thandar. We congratulate him not only for his work in the classroom, but also for inspiring young readers and writers through his new book. We've placed this book in all our elementary school libraries along with the other teacher author book that we celebrated last year. So I just wanted to celebrate him and, you know, to have teacher authors, not only they're doing their day job, but they're writing books. That's pretty cool, guys. So I know we celebrated one last year and I wanted to celebrate him tonight. You guys get to keep this book.
Awesome. Yeah, please give applause to the author. Great work. All right, are we moving into the, I guess it's called CALSPRA Awards for Selma Unified School Website and Newspaper?
Yeah, Selma Unified recently won two awards from the California School Public Relations Associations, recognizing some of our communications work. Here to speak more about the awards tonight is our Director of Communication Jenna Perkovich.
Hey Jenna.
Hey Board. Good evening. How are you? Nice to see all of you. Feels a little empty back there now. All right, so I am a part of an organization called California School Public Relations Association, also known as CALSPRA. And every March, they hold their annual conference, so I traveled down to San Diego. I submitted Selma Unified for some awards for our communication work and we won. So, yes. And we go up against other school districts throughout the entire state of California in these categories. So the two categories I chose to submit our work in was for the newspaper. So we won an award of merit for our monthly newspaper. And I would not be standing here holding this without two incredible people on the newspaper team. Not only is she our talented print technician, she is an amazing newspaper design layout person, PJ Yant. And we totally lucked out when Ed and I were deciding, you know, on a line of communication that we wanted to share with our families that resonated with our community. How lucky were we that PJ had a design background in newspaper. So wouldn't be standing here without her or our awesome translator, Lizeth Ramos, who is so quick. She turns around translations 24 hours and just is so fast. She's very easy to work with. So this award is for them as well.
And we have, we called on her to come tonight, but she wasn't able to come tonight.
They're more behind the scenes people, which is understandable, but we just really wanna hit home how big of an impact they have on this newspaper. So we are a three-woman team on this newspaper. I'm so proud of us and love, love working with them and producing that paper for our community once a month.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep 'em up.
All right, so we're gonna shift from the powerhouse woman team to our powerhouse male team of IT guys. The second award we won was for an award of excellence for our website redesign. So I'm sure you all remember that we presented that website back in August, I believe, right at the beginning of school. And we went through all the new, the layout, the organization, how our information is disseminated to our families, our school websites, our district website, our internal staff website. Everything changed. Website redesign projects are a huge lift. They require a lot of project coordination, a lot of patience. So I would not be standing here without some of these guys, two of which are here. So Mark Batista, our Director of IT. Lali Moa, Leonard Morales, Nassar Musaid, and Nick Shimodi. And so they were our powerhouse website team and, man, it was fun hanging out with those guys. We had weekly website meetings. It was frustrating at times, but we're very, very proud of the end product and what we were able to accomplish. So it was very, very cool to go up on stage in San Diego with Selma Unified being recognized. And I must tell you that I was there on my own since I, you know, communications is a one-person team, but it was really cool to see people were very impressed with the work we push out for being a small district and for, you know, being able to do what we do. So I'm so proud of who we work with, how we're able to connect with our community, and I can't wait to do more.
Great job.
Thank you.
I will say, and I hope Clovis Unified, Corinne, that's the superintendent there, she doesn't listen to this, but we use Clovis Unified as one of those kind of like, okay, how can we even be better than this as far as newspapers? And so we started with their newspaper, which everyone talks about, like they have this great newspaper they put out at Clovis. And I get it in my mailbox and a lot of our folks get it. And we started with that as the concept and now when you look at it, it doesn't even come close to ours and I can see that ours is that much better. It goes to our public, it's written in Spanish and English. Our parents are reading it, they're, they love it, they bring it up a lot. And so thank you for all the teams, PJ, everyone Jenna, that all that put their effort on that. It's an amazing one. And thank you guys, our website, same thing. Go around, look at other people's websites. We've got a really well-designed website, easy to access, and it's, it's great work. Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you everybody.
Thank you. That was a great work you guys did. We're gonna move into ABC 30 News and Stories.
Yeah, so I don't know how many of you guys know about this, but it's some cool stuff that is happening here in our district and the news picks it up. And, you know, whether a parent calls the newspapers or calls the news station or others, it's just fantastic. Selma Unified has been making another headline here. Earlier this month, ABC 30 featured a story on how Selma High School is addressing student loneliness on campus. So I want to show you this. This is the Link Crew that really does support our students and that's an issue in a lot of high schools in United States. And I love that we've taken steps forward to address this. And so take a moment here to see what was on the news.
Millions of people suffer from loneliness. One in three adults in the U.S. report feeling isolated, while two-thirds of children and teens say they are stressed about these feelings. That's why ABC News and ABC 30 are committed to a year of programming around solutions. We call it mental state, the loneliness epidemic. Action News reporter Anna Turea shows us how One Valley High School is linking students together to create connections.
The first day of school can be exciting, but it can also be intimidating.
I was really nervous because I didn't really get to look around the campus or anything. So I was a little bit lost and then also I didn't really know anyone.
That's how it felt for senior Marv Lopez Medina, who transferred to Selma High School last year. The first week of school felt lonely for her, coming into a new environment and with new faces. Cesar Gonzalez, a mental health clinician on campus, says it's a common feeling that many students go through.
Sometimes they don't have friends. They, they struggle with building those connections. They struggle with putting themselves out there.
Now in her final year, Marv is thriving, joining clubs like Theater and Link Crew.
I had heard about it in my Spanish class last year and my teacher had briefly described it and it sounded like something I maybe would want to do my senior year.
Started in 2013, Link Crew is about students helping students. Upperclassmen take on a mentorship role with freshmen and sometimes even sophomores as they make a transition into a new school.
We partner up to between 10 and 12 freshmen with one or two juniors or seniors. They become a team throughout the whole year. So they usually become friends.
Link leaders wear blue shirts so new students can easily find them. Myra Quintanilla is the head coordinator for the club.
Our link leaders go through a very intense training throughout the summer. We take between one to two days throughout the summer to train them and give them those skills to become a role model.
For Marv, knowing how a new school can be scary and lonely inspired her to put on the blue shirt.
I thought that would be like a good chance to maybe do something because I kinda had been in the shoes of not knowing anything.
There are also other resources at Selma High to help students who are dealing with isolation. Students can scan this QR code if they need mental health help. They can also visit the campus therapy dogs like Scout.
She will greet everyone as they come in through the library. This is her hub, this is her place.
For new students coming into Selma High School in the fall, school leaders are ready to welcome you and be that open link. Anna Turea, ABC 30 Action News.
Throughout the year, we will show you how to build social connections for our children, caregivers, and in your workplace.
That was great. All right, congratulations and that was the awesome, you know, we doing, you know, what are we doing here? So goes all, you know, salute to all those people, our teachers. All right, now we're gonna move into the ed service. Approve the new contract with the United We Lead Foundation.
Yes, thank you. This request is for contract approval with United We Lead Foundation. This contract will enable migrant students in grades nine through 11th to participate in a six-day summer college residential program at UC Santa Cruz from June 22nd to the 27th. During these six days, students will live the college experience by participating in tours of the college, learn about financial aid and applications, build college and career portfolios, and participate in team-building activities. The fiscal impact is $25,000 and will be funded out of migrant funds if approved.
All right, is there any questions from the board?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries. Moving into the facilities. Fresno Roofing, Jessica.
Yes, good evening. We have Steve Fucy, our Director of Facilities, that will be presenting this item.
I'll be first.
Oh, excuse me, Marty Hooton, our Director of Maintenance and Operations, will be presenting this item.
Good evening, everybody. I'm coming to you tonight to bring you the roof repair at Eric White. It's in...
Mike is on?
I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not a public speaker. Come to you tonight because we're gonna need a roof repair at Eric White. It's in the walkway from the cafeteria to the office and then on the other side of the office to the next wing. The over, overhang of the hallway is starting to collapse because of wood rot and stuff. So we got an estimate for you tonight for, from Fresno Roofing at $59,975. This is something that we need to get repaired this summer.
Right, is there any questions from the board on this item?
Say again where it is. Where it's gonna be repaired.
Eric White. At Eric White.
Eric White.
No, but the word, exactly it's gonna be.
The little, the little walkway from cafeteria to office.
Oh, okay.
And then on the other side, on the backside of the office.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
All right, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries. Moving into second item. BDM Incorporated, site and building improvements at the maintenance and operating, operational building complex.
And we have our Director of Facilities, Steve Fucy, who will be presenting this item.
Perfect. Good evening. I bring to you tonight, BDM. As you know, our MOT building has been through several phases due to the electrical portion being left out when we went out to the original bid. And this is one of the items that we had brought to you last month, asking to get the long lead time items and then we would be coming back after we did our job walk and everything to go out to bid for the electrical portion of this job. So as we mentioned, some conduits are in the ground, some flat works being done. This is pretty much pulling the wires from the main panel to new transformers and new panels and then from building to building. And we went out to bid and we had two bids come back and BDM Inc. is the one that came in ahead of the other contractor and the total was $59,785.
All right, is there any questions from the board?
Why is such a big discrepancy between the two bids?
So as the bids came in, Larger Electric was the second bidder. At the job walk, it was announced by the architect that the district had purchased the two transformers and the two panels, which was close to $40,000. And they included them in their bid, but they also were missing quite a few bid docs. So they were pretty much eliminated anyway, but that was the discrepancy of why they were so far off because approximately the $40,000 plus their markup.
And this is just from, to the panel, right? That's not including any electrical in the building, no lights, switches, outlets, nothing?
So the two portables are already pre-wired, so it's just putting the, or running the wire to it and running the panel inside. And this starts over at the bus barn and comes across the driveway and then goes from there to the transformer right next to the metal building.
I'm sorry, I should have clarified, for the MOT building, I mean the big, the big metal building.
Yeah, there's no lights or nothing in there.
Okay, that'll all be a TI or something we'll do?
Well, our guys will do that.
Gotcha, okay, cool.
All right, is there any other question? If not, may I get a motion to approve this item?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries. Moving into item number three, the Teeter Architects and Engineers, architects for the wrestling locker room sports educational facility.
So as we came to you a couple of months ago and we put out an RFQ for new architects to work with the district, as we mentioned, we had five of them that responded. They sent us in some paperwork, some information. We settled down to three architects to interview. We put a committee together that included district office personnel, site personnel from the high school, and a community member on the bond committee. And we held interviews for the three architects. And we just went through and questioned and it was a pretty close race, but it ended up coming out with Teeter at the end that had the most votes and points after the interviews. And we're just asking for your approval to proceed with them to work on the future wrestling locker room sports education facility for Selma High School.
Great. They also, I'm pretty sure they share their concepts like 3D rendering or something to see what we're gonna get from their...
So this was just questions and answers?
Okay.
Just because we were uncertain, so all we told them to prepare was questions and answers. We didn't ask for any presentations or anything. So that was what we based it off of on our scoring. And now if approved tonight for Teeter, then we'll work with them and have them put together some illustrations and stuff that will work within our budget to try to proceed with this project.
But they did bring illustrations to the interview?
Yes, they, they did bring a couple of options and different things.
A couple of options?
Yeah.
Have they done kind of similar work before on other schools?
They did the girls locker room here.
Oh, okay.
Was that a normal procedure, that way they did the interview?
For questions and answers?
Is that the norm, the way the norm is?
Yeah, so we sat down and drew up some questions and we worked with other districts and stuff to come up with the format for the questions and then the grading process. And then we did the interviews live for each architect, had the same questions, same, pretty much like a interview for a job, but just for work, for architectural skills.
And just to clarify, that's not a requirement anytime we engage in agreement with an architect, but given the scope of these projects, we wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence to make sure that we did select an appropriate architect for this project. And especially because we did include additional architects with the RFQ we had just done. So we just wanted to give everyone that opportunity to bring forth their, their best work and answer the questions for the panel. Again, we wanted to get a community member and different folks that are involved at the table to make sure that we all had a chance to ask the appropriate questions and make sure they were the best for the job.
And yeah, to your specific question, Estea, it is not normal to do an interview for the architects. We would like to start doing this process for big items and big things like this that, especially that the public might be looking at more closely. And I think it allows more voice from parents, school, and district together to make the decision.
Great. What is, what is our, the budget for, gonna be this, is it 20 million or something, 18 to 20 million?
10.5 million.
10.5 million. Got it. And as an architect, it's like 20% or something?
On their fees, they use a sliding scale fee, so they were, and that was one of the questions, and all three of them were all on the sliding scale fee, so.
Got it.
And did we, we had buy-in? I know this isn't the final, right? Because we still have to come up with a design and everything, but do we have buy-in too from the athletic department, like we?
Yeah, so once we decide this, we want to schedule a meeting with architects, some stakeholders, and then go through and look at the different options that we have and come up as a group and ask them for several different options so we could try to stay within our budget. And then at that point, we can work with them and then come back and present it to you guys.
Gotcha, okay, cool.
We actually had the team here alongside the AD and a coach that went to actually go visit Buchanan High School to get some of the voice from the school site to this.
Great.
Cool.
That's a great, are there any other questions from the board?
Just wondering.
Go for it.
Isn't Teeter the one that always has a bunch of change orders and leaves stuff out, like some of our past projects, or am I mistaken?
They have had change orders. They all do though.
Yeah, I think all of our architects and contractors have had change orders, yes.
Yeah, the Teeters, seems they have their names out there. They have done bigger projects. You said Buchanan High School they did it too, or?
Buchanan High School has a similar layout to what we're looking at, so.
Yeah, they are well-known architects out there.
So if they are having a similar layout and there's already precedent that they've done this before, we shouldn't be expecting anything coming out of nowhere that they missed something, right?
So...
Or at least hopefully.
So each school site is different, so the age of our campus, you know, the scope that we're looking for, all of these different factors change each project. So just because, let's just say at Buchanan or wherever else project they've done, or even at the girls locker room that they've done for us, could be different or a different experience in this project, depending on the buildings and the scope.
This, oh, sorry, this whole thing's not gonna be all new construction because we're looking at possibly modernizing like one of the locker rooms and different options. So of course, when you get into locker rooms that are 70 years old, you're gonna find some things that you don't see physically on the outside.
I understand change orders for things that are unforeseen. I'm talking about where, you know, things are left off that should have been stuff that would have been considered or should have been considered prior.
What's the other guy?
Because we've seen that happen already with different builders and different architects. And it almost seems like it's the norm and it should not be the norm, especially if your job is to design something and that's part of your job. So I'm just kind of a little uneasy.
No, I totally understand. I mean, since I've been here, each job that we're on with the five different architects we're using, we've had change orders. So I mean, they happen and none of us like them. It's not anything that's comfortable dealing with. All we could do is our due diligence and try to work out all the problems with them and without directly just pointing fingers, just come up with a conclusion when it comes downtime for the building to negotiate with them to make sure they cover, cover their costs on their mistakes as well.
And I do want to say, like, one of the things when I hear foreseen versus unforeseen is ensuring that the athletic department, the school site really knows along with us, like, here's what we want so we don't make changes later, start the design and go, no, now I want this. That was the whole reason about visiting other high schools. The, the good news with Teeter, they, they built the girls locker room and it's very well-done, so there's some, a bit of comfort in that. But really, regardless of that, it's really everyone having their eye on this to say, this is what we want when it's finally designed and decided on. So that part to ensure. What I can't say is these unforeseen things of you dig far enough and you find something and it was truly unforeseen, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, no, I think the Marx is right and we just want to make sure, especially Steve Fucy and Marty's, make sure that we review everything underground survey as we learn properly. You know, we don't want to see, we want to see less change.
No, there'll be GPR and everything else done for the project, for sure. But like you say, it's just the older buildings or, you know, lines that weren't marked, even if you find them, you know, is it abandoned, is it live, different things like that, those are things we run into.
Awesome. All right, is there any other question? If not, may I have a motion to approve Teeter Architects and Engineer for this project?
I will make a motion.
I will second.
All right, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we gonna move into the business services? Resolution FY 25-47.
Yes, thank you. So this is the zero emission school bus and infrastructure known as ZSB Incentive Project that helps us replace some of our buses with EV buses. And so this is just an application, this is part B. So part A, a part of the application, has already been submitted and approved through that phase. This is part B where we're, again, we're, we haven't been approved for the funding quite yet. We still have another phase to go and at that phase is when we'll decide if we want to move forward. Obviously, if we, if we get awarded at that point, we'll decide if we want to move forward. We do, we are hearing of, you know, for example, AB 1111 where the deadline is gonna get extended from 2035 to 2045. So that might relieve some of the pressure on us to do EV so soon. So those are all things we're taking into consideration. So for tonight, this is just allowing us to move forward with the application process, but we're not committed at this time because we haven't been awarded yet, so.
Joe, we can just not take the money? We're not locked into anything?
Right, this is just to continue the, the application process.
Yeah. When is the mandatory to be have all the buses to zero emission? Is that 2040 or is it 2030?
So the original deadline was 2035, but AB 1111 is extending that deadline to 2045. So we're, we're keeping, you know, the pulse on that and just seeing how that affects us. So we are taking that into consideration on whether the, if the need is to proceed with this funding or delay it now that that's being extended. So we'll just keep a close eye on that.
Yeah, that's a great idea to at least put the infrastructure so you get ready for it.
Exactly, yep.
That's awesome. Are there questions from the board? All right, may I have a motion to approve this item?
I'll make one.
All right, we have a motion from Mark and a second from Stella.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries. Moving into the human resources. Approved 25-26 adult school calendars.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sahoda. So we are presenting to the board today the 25-26 adult school calendar. This calendar was developed in cooperation with Mrs. Yolanda Jimenez Rees, Director of Alternative Education, and Mrs. Diana Parker, who's the Assistant Principal at the adult school. The three of us worked together to look at the calendar for 25-26. And so this calendar we came up with is the reflects registration dates, start and end dates of both the fall and spring semesters, and the tentative adult school graduation date. We are asking for the board to please approve this calendar for the 25-26 adult school.
Any holidays when they're moved at, anything?
They follow the same schedule for, so with vacation days, spring break is all follows our traditional schedule. They just have a shorter semester and also we've listed the registration dates that the school will be open specifically for registration of new students.
Great. Is there any questions from the board? May I have a motion to...
I make a motion to accept the calendar. I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're gonna move into the consent agenda. The items listed under the consent agendas are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board of Trustees in one motion. There is no discussion of these items before the board, board unless the member of the board staff or a public request specific item be discussed and/or removed from the consent agenda. It is understood the administration recommended approval on all consent items. Each item on a consent agenda approved by the members of the governing board shall be deemed to be have considered and a full adopted and recommended. Any questions on the consent agenda? Is there any item that needs to be pulled out for discussion?
I'd like to pull up 4A.
Any other items? If not, we will vote on the left, on the rest of the items. May I have emotions to accept those rest of the items?
So everything except 4A is what we're talking about right now?
That's right.
Okay, so.
May I have a motion on the rest of the items?
I'll make a motion for the rest of the items.
Is there a second to it?
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's discuss on 4A. Mr. Gomes?
No, we're just, it's just to vote on it, I guess.
Just vote on it, huh?
Separately.
Okay, vote on separately, okay, all right. May I have a motion to accept item 4A?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept it, as presented on 4A.
All right, should we take a rule call?
That would be probably good.
All right, Mr. Fedor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Fedor.
Wait a second.
What's up? Sorry, is there a second to it?
I will second.
All right, we're going to take a rule call on this item and let's start with Mr. Medina.
No.
No, or abstain?
Um, well, make.
Yes or no, or abstain?
Yes or no, yeah.
No?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Mrs. Dorte?
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Kessler?
No.
And Mr. Fedor?
Yes.
And myself, Jess, and motion carries. All right, and we're going to move into the board reports. We'll start with you, Mr. Medina.
Oh, it's, it's been a little while. I got to go down to Jackson, saw Mr. Gomes there and saw the Easter Bunny.
Oh, God.
And a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of our, our students getting to take pictures of the Easter Bunny. That was pretty cool. And in town, they had a Friday night Taco Fest or something like that, that was pretty neat. And so far, there was a lot of great activity. We had the Sikh Parade, we had large areas, a lot of our churches were doing stuff for Easter. So overall, a lot of good things went on this past few weeks.
Great, any, anything else? All right, Mrs. Dorte?
Yes, I am continuing to attend the MIG training. I'm in three, the third one. Yes, I'm almost, I'm halfway done. So continuing to receive that training and again, just having that opportunity to engage with other board members across California has been very, very good, learning a whole lot. And just open houses, I had the opportunity to attend several and they were all well-attended in Danola, Jackson, EW Roosevelt. And because I attended a county program, was not able to attend Garfield, so I miss Garfield. But was great to be out there and, you know, engaging with the parents and the teachers, going back and talking with teachers, so.
That's great.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, Mrs. Kessler?
Well, I attended a couple of Heartland's basketball playoffs. They were in the playoffs, can you believe it? Yes, and they were very exciting. Attended that Chamber of Commerce dinner, which was very nice. And also I attended the Roosevelt, Terry, Garfield Open House. They're all so nice, they're, they do such excellent, excellent work. Their, our, our kids are doing great and our teachers are doing great work. And today, I, I was surprised or happily surprised that I got invited to, I guess we all did, to the transportation celebration and it was very nice. I was glad to be there and transfer, hadn't been there for a long time and it was nice to see some faces I remember from back in the day. And that's about it.
Great. All right, Mr. Fedor?
Yeah, way too much stuff going on. I've just basically been everywhere, every time I turn around, I'm running into a Stella or a Stella. So it's been fun watching. I just want to tell everybody, we're kind of sort of getting in the home stretch, right? I mean, this is it. This is the, we're, we're back from spring break and let's, let's finish strong. You guys are doing awesome. Look forward to it, to seeing how we, how we finish, so keep it up, everybody.
I just want to say with the open houses and the classrooms, you've seen the artwork in the classroom.
Artwork was good.
And at all the sites, so I think we have an art teacher that's contracted, so just the artwork, it's amazing.
And in kindergarten at Roosevelt, my goodness, you could not tell they were kindergarten. They would do such a great job.
Yeah, great. From me, I attended the Sikh Parade, that we, they had it, over 20,000 people gathered and throughout the state and it's a great turnout and thanks to Mr. Fedor, he went out there, and Mr. Gomes and Boljeet and giving out the lectures and flyers about Punjabi classes that we started here and hopefully, you know, we get a few more students and thank you for that and obviously the food was great and we did some shopping, so that was nice. Yeah, that's all from me, thank you. And Subban Nenner reports?
Yeah, thank you. So today is National Bus Driver Appreciation Day, as Esteia was talking about. We celebrated with a special lunch over at the Transportation Department to thank board members who showed up. Esteia, Joel, thank you guys for being there. I want to take a moment to sincerely thank our bus drivers for everything they do. If you go in out there, you would see kids writing little letters to our bus drivers who are really special. And, you know, they're the first friendly faces they see, they're the last ones they see each day as they travel. Our drivers help set the tone for a positive school experience and play a vital role in supporting student learning and well-being. So I want to thank them, thank you Renee for the work you do with those guys, so happy Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So there are several exciting school events happening between now and the end of the year. Yeah, it is, it is the home stretch. There are state testing, it's big right now, there's a lot of days that they're going to be sitting there for hours a day, testing. That's not an easy feat, but we appreciate our students, our families, getting our kids ready and our teachers and administrators preparing them for these assessments. We encourage everyone to check your child's school calendar. We have everything from awards banquet, spring musical sports, dances, graduations coming up and more, so check out the website for all those great things and appreciate everyone's, a spring break, work that they did and getting everything set up for these last few weeks here.
I also heard that top 25 students coming up.
Top 25's coming up here, a lot of stuff happening, yeah.
Great, looking forward. All right, we're going to go back into the closed sessions and thank you for attending this meeting and have a great rest of the week and best of luck to the teachers and students for CATS testing, like you said, and this week, and good night. We're going to have a meeting here?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Okay, we'll stay here in five minutes.